Earlier, we had our review of the single site plans.
So now, we are moving on to returning to the open session. And we have introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Are there any tonight, Dr. Cash?
Sure, I'll make a quick report. Last Thursday, our schools and our district office participated in the Great California Shakeout. And we had some external observers with the Red Cross and the Santa Barbara Fire Department provided some great monitoring and also some great feedback to our sites and to our district office, Barbara Kiani, on our drills and how well or how well we did not go through the Great American, Great California Shakeout. I can tell you that the feedback informally has been that the majority of our schools did an excellent job, which is really fantastic. And we have a couple of little tweaks we're going to do that really aren't significant in the sense of safety for students, but are more for protocols for us to ensure that we're fully communicating with each other. And I would remind all of us that these are very important drills that we engage in. And it's fun to be part of one that's done statewide. Monday, October 31st, is not only Halloween, but it's a big professional development day for our staff. At that time, all of our certificated teachers are going to be reviewing the Common Core standards at a very special presentation at Earl Warren Showgrounds by Suitsu Gendron, we're very excited about. Special education staff will be also working in professional development mode, reviewing the Classified Procedural Manual. And I remind everyone that school is not in session that day. MTD, police, fire, sheriff department, they've all been informed. I'm going to be sending out a parent connect message to all of our families Thursday night to remind them and also plead to all of our families to ensure that they keep their children and our students safe on Halloween evening so that they arrive Tuesday morning to our schools ready to learn. Finally, we also have a number of performances coming up. It's kind of the first round of performances in our school district, in our secondary schools. And a copy of all those performances has been provided to you. And there are copies for everyone else at the back of the room. And with that, I conclude the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Okay, board members, are there any comments or correspondence from board members?
I wanted to mention briefly that Ms. Lamone and I attended a conference down in Los Angeles at the beginning of last week on green schools and attended a number of excellent sessions on sustainability and practices around having well-developed school sites that promote environmental concerns, but also integrating environmental education into the science curriculum. And it was very useful. It brought home a lot of good ideas about ways to save money and expect we'll be sharing those with staff. I also attended on Friday, connected to this in some ways because it's along a similar theme, a day-long workshop that was sponsored by the Orphola and Packard Foundations that involved people from all over the United States, actually talking about nutrition and wellness, particularly in light of after-school programming and summer school. And we were able to share the good things that we do in our district. And I think we impressed some people with what we do because not all districts are as up to speed as we are on the wellness front. So it was very useful and made some good connections with some private partners that hopefully will be able to work with us in funding some projects at our schools.
Other board members, Mr. Herron?
Yes, I'll probably mention that Saturday, Mrs. Parker and myself, I were the proud graduates of Masters in Governance, a series of nine Saturdays over the last year and a half that we spent learning how to be good board members and how to run a school district and all those good things. So we both graduated, walked down the aisle, had our friends and relatives there. It was pomp and circumstances, it was really nice.
Well, congratulations. Any other comments or correspondence from the board? If not, we will move on to announcement of closed session action. We have no action to report from our closed session this evening. Public comments, do we have public comments this evening?
We have one public comment, Kenneth Locke.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I went before the city council today and did a public comment. And this is one of the signs that I brought before them that I actually did today that kind of capitalism is a failed experiment. And it's pretty apparent from my perspective that it's a failure. But somehow or another, we're able to keep propping this economy up. When it comes to education, I think a lot of people are understanding now that, you know, loans for college and all that, that's almost like the equivalent of our mortgage disaster. A lot of these students that are going to school here will be going to college and getting loans and going to school for whatever reason to be able to incorporate themselves into this system. But this system that we have here, this capitalism, it's not sustainable. And let's see, what else I can get into here? I think I've been stood before you before, and I've mentioned that in fact that when it comes to the arts, actually, I had a website up, my name is again Kenneth Locke, L-O-C-H. I had a website up, which I took down, but I'm actually now putting some videos up on YouTube. I'm actually claiming to be the Renaissance genius for the 21st century. And what I'm here to do is actually to reform our educational system into the interdisciplinary, claim to be the primary genius through the philosophy of aesthetics, through the fine art form of painting, claim to witness the Enlightenment that was reserved for the genius. And actually, I explain it through the abstract art movement of 20th century and like the works of Jackson Pollock. And the idea that we're going to evolve from out of this material age capitalism where we base it on our possessions individually, more of a community base, but also the idea of a spiritual relationship where we can actually understand painting as a spiritual practice, we can actually understand it in relation to the works of Jackson Pollock, say.
Thirty seconds.
And then also in relation to music and dance, the whole basis of that interdisciplinary and also in a way that the mind and body are integrated. Also, I'm the genius of tennis. Actually, I'm here to bring tennis into a Renaissance where we understand the integration of the mind, body, spirit, soul, how it's ambidextrous, how it's holistically healthy. But again, Kenneth Locke, YouTube, just thought I'd take the time to speak before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. We do have another public comment, Lane Wheeler.
Thank you, Lane Wheeler, president of Santa Barbara Teacher Association. Three quick items from your consent agenda, E6, just the reminder that there likely would be some contract issues that would need to be negotiated and that would sort, of course, need to be concerned in that regard. E12, the approval of the site administrator, while we believe this is an appropriate action, we are also concerned again about general fund money going out to specifically fund that. I know the district committed $25,000 at the outset of that position and apparently has been attributed to that still, so just be concerned with that. And then the item E13, once again, in reading through that MOU, there doesn't appear to be any allocation of money for a stipend for master teachers to support the student teachers. So that's going to be a constant refrain for you all to hear and hopefully to act upon. And I would encourage you to do, take action in that regard when you approve those items so that they don't go on for year after year after year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Okay, we can move on to acceptance of donations.
I will move to approve with gratitude. Second?
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. Before we act on our consent agenda, I would just like to clarify, clarification in item E11, the first item in the list on our attachments, Lee Simmons, it reads Assistant Principal or Assistant Principal Special Project. We'd like to amend that to simply read Assistant Principal. And then we will be pulling item E12. Okay, are there any other items that board members would like to pull? Hearing none? Oh, sorry, Mr. Herron?
I just want to verify one question, just to be sure. On item E17, approval of Julie Sorensen to serve on the special Santa Barbara Education Foundation Representative to the Measure I, I noticed on one of the original agenda, she was an employee of the school district. But is that not true? I mean, Barbara had told me it's not true.
No, she is not an employee.
But it was on the, it was on the list for approval.
Correct, it's not on the amended personnel.
Okay, so she is not an employee.
That's correct.
Okay. And I'd like to pull E23.
Then is there a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda?
I will move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda. Second?
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And we will return to item E23 at the end of this agenda. So that brings us to our action agenda. Item F1, approval of single plans for student achievement for all non-charter elementary and secondary schools of the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Ms. Swasky?
Okay, I will go forward. I don't know a lot to say about this. All of you enjoyed an hour and a half, a little bit over an hour and a half, talking individually with each principal for five minutes or so and got to, you know, ask the questions you had. I hope it was, being in the room, it looked like a really nice change. And as the rounds kept going, the tone of the voices got a little more animated, it got a little louder in the room, and, you know, people were nervous at first. And I think that it turned out to be a really genuine, you know, honest way of sharing what the schools are doing, what the principals as the instructional leaders are doing and how they're spending their categorical funds appropriately to support their program. So we have it here as an action item for approval of all those plans, non-charter site plans. And if you have questions or comments?
Do we have questions or comments?
I'll just make a comment, when you do this next year, make it 20 minutes so that I have five minutes to ask questions. Because I really didn't, I mean, I spent a lot of time and had a lot of things in my mind, but each of them took five minutes, and I don't blame them one bit because that wasn't enough time for them. I would have liked another five minutes to ask my questions or some of my questions.
Okay, so more time. We also were saying that maybe we could rotate the number ones one way, the number threes the other way, and the twos could jump so that they could actually have the experience of hearing other principals.
Okay, so I'm going to, just want to clarify something. Are there any concerns or questions or comments regarding the plans themselves? Because I actually wanted to make a couple of comments about the process as well, and I don't know if other people want to comment on the process. I feel like we went to kind of to the opposite extreme of where we used to be. Some of you remember when we, actually, I'm not sure if anybody, were you on the, when we used to meet for like an hour with each school practically? And obviously, that was way more than what we needed to do. But I found today's process too much. I felt like by the time I was through, listening to everybody and most of the principals, as I mentioned, most of the principals were trying to talk as fast as they could to get everything in in five minutes, that I felt like I was feeling a bit overwhelmed by all the information. I actually would, I think, would prefer to possibly do the elementary and the secondary separately so that we could have a little bit more time. We used to do that when we used to take a long time. We used to have them on separate days. And I think if we did divide them up, then it would be possible to have a little bit more time with each one. The other thing that I might suggest is, one of the things that I found helpful when I first joined the board was hearing what the other board members, the questions that the other board members were asking of the principals because they had a little bit more history than I did, and they picked out things that I hadn't really picked up on. And I know that Ms. Lamone, as a new member, mentioned that she wasn't quite sure what the process, what the process was expecting. And so I feel like we lost a little bit of that for a new board member to be able to see what other board members are asking. Just like the principals kind of wanted to hear the other principals' presentations, I felt like I also, even as, even having been on the board for a long time, I still kind of missed not getting to hear what the other board members were asking. So while I really appreciate the attempt to make it a much more efficient process, and I think we all kind of, well, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I can say, I absolutely appreciate that because it used to be way too, too long. There's, I don't want us to lose some of the things that actually were kind of positive in that old process. I don't know what other people feel about that, but if you would like to comment, Ms. Parker?
You know, I appreciate your comments, Mrs. Cordero. And the one other, I guess a question for the rest of the board is, is what about having it so that there's like two and three for the board members? Or, you know, with those, maybe the superintendent sitting, one of them or the superintendent going back and forth? Because I think it's also really interesting to hear some of the superintendent's questions. Obviously, I know that he's met separately with principals beforehand, but I, there's the interest of time and then there's the interest of really hearing what everybody's questions are and supporting, making sure the board is fully informed. So I'm just wondering if there's some way that we can combine, combine it.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Deacon?
I would just say, well, I think I broke protocol a little bit because I started with questions. Having read all the plans already, I felt like I could just dive right in, and there was a bit of a sigh of relief on some parts of the principals because they weren't having to speak the same script over and over every time. But I have found the site visits incredibly valuable. And for me, even a site visit where the plan is presented and then you walk through and actually see things that are implemented in practice because for number of the principals that were there, I've been visiting their sites recently. And so I felt like many of the things they were discussing tonight, I had already spoken with them about and had seen that in action. So if there's a way to incorporate site visits with this as well, that would be useful.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the single plans for student achievement for all non-charter elementary and secondary schools in Santa Barbara Unified School District.
Okay, is there a second?
I will go ahead and second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? I just want to say that I think all of us were very pleased with the presentations from our principals. Okay, so all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. And I see at least one of our principals in the audience, so I just want to, you can accept it on behalf of all of your colleagues that we appreciate the work that went into them. Thank you.
Twitter.
Okay, so we will move on to item F2, final reading and approval of Santa Barbara Unified School District's initial proposal to negotiate with the California School Employees Association, CSEA, for the 2011-14 agreement. And Mr. Smith, I think you're going to start this or?
I think since Elaine walked up to the podium, I'll just let her handle it.
Well, thank you, board members. We're just bringing back the final reading of our initial proposal to CSEA as we reviewed it at the last board meeting. We are set now for negotiations to begin on November 9th. We're going to do a full day of negotiations, and we have also scheduled another day the following week if needed to continue. It is our hope that we will complete it within that time period.
Thank you. We've seen this a number of times, so, but is there, are there any questions or comments from the board? Then do we have a motion?
I will move to approve the final reading and approval of Santa Barbara Unified School District's initial proposal to negotiate with the California School Employees Association for the 2011-14 agreement.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, Mr. Herron, I'm not sure I got a, yes, I, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, motion carries five zero. Okay, so then on to F3, board adoption of the 2012-2013 budget development calendar. And Mr. Smith, you will present this to us?
I will take this one. I think the board's familiar with the budget development calendar that we bring to the board on an annual basis. It lays out not only the development of what will be the 12-13 fiscal year budget, but also identifies the milestones with respect to the monitoring of our existing 11-12 budget. So you will see that it starts with December 13th to 11, which is our first interim report date for this fiscal year, and also ends with the first interim report for the next fiscal year. So you can see how both the budget development and the current budget cycle intertwine. Unless there's any questions about it, we're asking for your approval. I did notice that there should be a correction on it, and it's really a function of the former two districts. If you look at the third to last row on the second page, there's a description where it says, it says, prepare final ending balance with unadded actual income and expenditure reports. Actually, that is correct. No, I guess we did take that out of there. There was a requirement that we had to report expenditures and revenues in the paper when we were a common administration, and 35-110, actually, of the ed code, provided that we had to show that we weren't moving money from one reserve into the other. And I thought that was in there, but when I read through it again, I guess we did delete it. So that's just a function of my bad eyesight, I guess. So at this point, unless you have any questions or comments, we'd be asking for your approval.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from Mr. Smith? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I'll move to adopt the 2012-13 budget development calendar.
Okay, is there a second?
I will go ahead and second that.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Smith. We are now on to item F4, approval of board action on student discipline case numbers
In case number 11/12-8, I move to accept the stipulated agreement for a full expulsion ending in June 2012.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero.
In case 11/12-6, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel for a full expulsion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero.
In case 11/12-2, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel for a full expulsion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Okay, we are now on to our conference agenda. We're actually a little early on our conference agenda, so do we have everybody here? So we were looking, yes, we're looking for Ms. Catipush, and we're not seeing her, but we have you in her stead. So we have an update on fighting back and counsel on alcoholism and drug abuse to present to us this evening, and thank you for being here early.
Shereen is at a conference in Washington DC, so we've come in her place. My name is Melissa Wilkins. I'm the Friday Night Live coordinator with the Fighting Back and the Counsel on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, but I'm actually not going to be speaking. I have our students speaking.
Lean into the microphone.
My name is Stephanie Vargas, and I am a senior at Santa Barbara High School. I am a part of Friday Night Live Leadership, which is a group of teens coming together from Santa Barbara High School, San Marcos High School, and Dos Pueblos High School to stop drug and alcohol abuse in the community. Some of the activities that we do to reduce drug and alcohol use among teens are running campaigns to raise awareness about the dangers of drugs and alcohol. To prepare for our upcoming Red Ribbon Week campaign, Friday Night Live had a leadership training for junior high and high school students. At the training, there were workshops teaching about underage drinking, marijuana, safe driving, and Red Ribbon Week. We spent time preparing workshops about these topics so that students would be prepared to lead discussions and give presentations at each other's schools. We're here to give real and accurate information to students about drugs and alcohol so that students can make safe decisions.
My name is Jenny Castro, and I'm a sophomore at Santa Barbara High School. We came to talk to you all about the Red Ribbon Week campaign that we are running at each of our junior high and high schools. Red Ribbon Week began in 1985 when US Drug Enforcement Administration undercover agent Enrique Camarena was killed by drug traffickers during a drug bust in Mexico. Enriquez was not the first nor the last death in the fight against drugs. His loss of life has become a symbol of the sacrifice of the many lives law enforcement officers, as well as the families who have lost loved ones to the violence that accompanies addiction and drug use. This includes people who have lost their lives in car accidents, suicides, and homicides having to do with alcohol and other drugs. His friends and family wore red ribbons to honor him and remind people of the damage alcohol and other drugs can do. The ribbons caught on, and now Red Ribbon Week takes place all over the country. During Red Ribbon Week, we pledge to be drug and alcohol free and wear red wristbands in honor of the lives that have been sacrificed. We wear a red wristband as a stop sign to stop the violence of drug use. We wear a red wristband as a promise, a promise to maintain our own commitment to the health and safety of ourselves, our families, and our young people. We wear a wristband to focus our attention on a common cause, the fight against tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs, so please join us to take the pledge and wear red on Thursday. The Red Ribbon Celebration is designed to create awareness concerning the problems related to the use of tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs, and support healthy, productive, drug-free lifestyles.
So this week, in order to raise awareness, there are a lot of different activities happening at each of the school campuses. Some of them include students pledging to be drug and alcohol free, bulletin announcements to educate regarding the harmful effects of drug and alcohol while promoting healthy outlets, classroom presentations to give students real and accurate information so that they can make healthy decisions, poster banners and bulletin boards to create awareness, alternative activities to support healthy, productive, drug-free lifestyles. Some of these activities include lunchtime, games like balloon stomp, dancing competitions, and drug and alcohol jeopardy.
I'm Derek, I'm a senior at Santa Barbara High School. I'm the secretary of F and L. Yeah.
He has wristbands for each of you and some extras that you can share with your staff. And then I know, I think we have a little bit of extra time, so we just also wanted to open it up to any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your presentations and also your commitment to this really important informational program that you provide for others, for your fellow students, because it can be very, very, thank you, very, very useful to them. So are there any questions and/or comments from board members?
Last year, I commented at this time about something I did that embarrassed my kids at the time, but it still turned out good. But I made a copy this time. Over 20 years ago, I wrote this in the Santa Barbara news press for my company. We support Red Ribbon Week, the parent pledge. I will not allow parties or gatherings in my home when I am not present. I will not serve nor will I allow youth under the legal drinking age to consume alcohol in my home or on my property. I will not allow the use of illegal drugs in my home or on my property. I will develop and communicate a clear position about drugs and alcohol and will set an example that can be followed. I will not allow a double standard, hugs, not drugs. That was the comment over 20 years ago, so. And I had the nerve to sign that and put it in the paper. And a lot of people thought I was crazy, but I still believe that today, and my kids turned out turned out really good.
Ms. Cordero?
Yes. Ms. Lamone?
I wanted to thank the students for being here, and I noticed that you're all from Santa Barbara High Schools, representing the Dons. I'm curious also if the other high schools are participating with you and their involvement.
Yeah, it's San Marcos and Dos Pueblos, but none of them could be here tonight.
Well, thank you for being here, and thanks to the San Marcos and Dos Pueblos students for being involved.
And we will wear red proudly. Thank you. Okay. Any further comments that you'd like to make, or?
The only other thing I think I was supposed to say was that we have our Summit for Danny Fundraising hike this weekend. Comes at the end of Red Ribbon Week, and a lot of our students, both in reconnecting youth, and then some of these students here are going to be hiking, also to support the Daniel Bryant Youth and Family Center, and to help raise awareness and money for that program as well. So, other than that, thank you so much. It's always a pleasure to come and be able to present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, we will move on after that Inspire presentation. We will move on to G two, The First Reading of Board Policies and Administrative Regulations, 5116.1, intra-district open enrollment, and Board Policy, 5117, inter-district attendance. Okay. Ms. Swawski.
Okay, I, thank you. Yes, this is one of our most favorite, favorite policy, isn't it? We see it at least once a year. I'm going to ask Mr. Marlon Sumter to come up. He and I have been talking today about this, because we understand there's some questions about this policy, and I know particularly Board Member Parker wants, would probably like to speak to it. Mr. Sumter also prepared some documents to go with it. This is a conference agenda item, so it's a first reading, and certainly we want to, you know, make adjustments as needed. So I'll let Mr. Sumter talk, or would you rather have Board Member Parker? I don't know. Okay. Okay.
What you have in front of you is a proposal revisions, first for the first reading of the Board Policy 5116.1, that was revised in such a way to more align with what the CSBA manual or the CSB recommendation or sample is. I understand that in presenting it that way, it created some questions or concerns about certain pieces of it. And as Ms. Swawski has stated, I have actually prepared a revision of the revision. If you wish to see that, after we have some discussion about what you have in front of you. And I do understand that particular questions or concerns were related to some date issues as well as maybe priority lists for options for transfer that are in the policy as well. So with that being said, we were open for discussion on it. I answer any questions you might have, too.
Yes, this is one that we come back to year after year, and this is one that I've, we've all spent a lot of time on, but I've spent a lot of time on. And as Ms. Swawski knows, in 2009, we did a really big revision of it. And what I was seeing, Mr. Sumter, was essentially the CSBA, probably their template, for the most part, coming back again. And we had the template in place beforehand. We'd followed sort of a variation on that for a number of years. But what happened in the spring of 2009 was a large number of siblings because of the way we had the priorities addressed. At one of our elementary schools, a large number of siblings, there was no space for them because we had to, because of our priority order, we were giving first priority to program improvement, students from program improvement schools, and it bumped all these siblings, and it was very unfortunate. So we spent a lot of time with Mr. Price. We addressed it. It turned out that the CSBA language is, it's not ed code, or you, there, it's not required to have it in that particular order. So in looking at the revisions, given the amount of work that we did on it back in '09, '10, my personal suggestion would be that we pretty much keep the existing 5116.1, with the exception of adding the changes that you made to the application and selection process, which is not in the original BP, and the transportation, because you slightly revised that section. Just adding that piece into the end of the existing BP 5116.1 to update it and provide the date change. I mean, I think it's very appropriate, given the issues that we see in terms of trying to get the enrollment process completed, as we're trying to build master schedules, et cetera, that it makes sense to move it from March 1st to February 15th. So I don't have any problem with that, and I think that this new piece, which I suspect is one that you've done more individual work on, that that just get added into the old board policy. That would be my suggestion on the board policy piece.
If it would be helpful, in anticipation of these particular questions, I did do that as a draft form here, and it's, I have it also downloaded if you want to have discussion about that on the screen as well, Mr. Hattig, if you want to take a look at that. Basically, what I did after presenting this part to you for tonight, I went back and took and revised that to be a combination or a blend of our previous policy and the CSBA format, but keeping the priority list as is. And that's basically what you would see either here in this draft, or if you wish to look at that to see if that's what you're talking about.
That's fine. I don't know if my fellow board members would like to see that.
Well, I wouldn't mind putting it up so we could just make sure that we're all talking about the same thing.
Yeah, I agree, too.
Okay, and if you look at this from the beginning, you'll see it is pretty much the same language as the existing policy. Make sure I have the right one here myself. Okay? And the priority list is still the same. You'll see that this enrollment priorities is the same language as what we have in our current policy. The second part here then goes into greater detail, is more specifics of what kinds of priorities we would look at in, on page one and two. So it blends over for, I think, six or seven priorities, but thank you. There you go. Okay, so we have the first two on this page. These two priorities, or at least what was being called priorities, are more broad pieces of information on the types of things that would apply for those transfers. And then this, these two here are in our current policy, and if you wouldn't mind going ahead and scrolling up to page two, you'll see the other ones that are also now, this is the priority list that's in our current policy. Okay? And basically, what was added in the revision you have in front of you were the suggestions by the CSBA sample, but those then are included now further down below on this page where enter options to transfer. And throughout that section right there is good enough. You'll see the part for open enrollment, the title one for program improvement, persistently dangerous, and victims of violent crimes on school grounds, as well as just specific circumstances that might create a safety issue for a student on campus. So those are listed as options for transfer, but not necessarily included in the priority list that we had before. So taking our old policy and blending it with what you have in front of you, we came up with this. If you wouldn't mind going down to the end of this, you'll see then the selection process that you have in front of you, and then the transportation issue is at the bottom of that. And it sounds like that's kind of what you were describing. I don't know if that matches exactly.
Yes. For me, Mr. Sumter, this essentially captures exactly what I was talking about, so.
Can I ask a quick question, and I may just be missing it in your new revised one, but there was a sentence that said on page two of three of the original policy, "Priority for transfer requests to attend a school outside of a student's attendance area shall be given in the following order." Did we, is that reflected in this?
I thought so, because I went to today and double-checked, and I thought every paragraph was included, just arranged a little differently. And I think I gave my master copy to you somewhere out there.
Yeah. I think the wording is that the superintendent or designee shall grant priority to any, it's on page one of four. After the first three, the superintendent or designee shall grant priority.
On page one of four.
Okay, so it says, "As follows." As long as we're clear that people reading this will understand that means "in the following order," because that was where we spent all of our time before, was kind of painstakingly deciding the priority order. So I don't know if we want to go back to the original language, or if people feel that "as follows" means that it in fact is a rank ordering.
I actually had a question about the dates. And I understand that a very important reason is the scheduling the classes, the master schedules at the school, but what else? I mean, what, some of the things we heard was that February 15th tended to be more of a challenge for parents and for the community to get those in versus the March 1st. So I'm trying to figure out what else prompted the change.
Well, that was a significant piece of it right there. Part of it also was trying to coordinate timing of this process with the new Open Enrollment Act and the deadlines related to notifying families there as well. So we wanted to be able to arrange this in such a way that we were able to get students in under this before we had to transfer, use that Open Enrollment Act transfer policy to put students in as well. So it was a date coordination kind of a thing, because the deadline for notifying families under the Open Enrollment Act is within 60 days of receiving the application. So we wanted to be able to look at this policy and applications as well, to know how many students were going to have under this policy, as well as the one in the Open Enrollment Act. So those were the two biggest pieces as far as class, you know, staffing and class sizes, as well as the Open Enrollment Act coordination.
Okay. Thank you. And then one minor thing. Page two of four, that first number, page two of four, number five, I believe that that last word is supposed to be "area."
The one on the bottom, number five. There's two number five.
Sorry, the number five at the bottom.
Ms. Lamone, which one, which one are you saying?
Sorry. It says, "Upon finding that special circumstances exist that might be harmful or dangerous to the students in the current attendance," I believe it's "area."
Okay.
And there's also an "at" instead of an, it's "at capacity" at the last sentence.
Mr. Herron?
Back on page one, the bottom, number one, where "Any student whose parent, guardian is assigned to that school as his or her primary place of employment," our existing policy says, "for three or more hours per day." Why'd you leave that off?
Well, actually, that wasn't intentional, to leave that. I really just cut and pasted this into this from the previous policy, so it was.
I'm reading from what's got the check mark through it, or cross mark through it, which I presume is current policy.
Okay, well, and I do think that that, I stand corrected, this is what was in the CSBA sample, and that part was part of what the board had added prior that was overlooked.
Yeah, I'm just curious if there's a reason for leaving that off, because I like it in.
Yeah, there was not, no intention of leaving that off.
Thank you.
So, and that's something I'm assuming you wish to leave it in.
Yes.
Any, oh, Ms. Parker?
I'm just wondering if we can move on to the AR on this one.
Are we ready to move on? Are there any further questions or concerns about the BP? Okay, let's take a look at the AR.
For the AR, Mr. Sumter, I thought that the new AR actually fits very nicely. The only, for me, the only things that I noticed was that on page two of three of the new AR, number six, where it says, "approved applicants must confirm their enrollment within 10 school days." The original AR says five school days, and I think that that is much easier in terms of making student placements if we tighten up that timeframe. The other piece that's missing in that line is just a reminder right there that approvals may be revoked due to excessive enrollment. And there, I just really want to drive it home to parents that even before school starts, they might get an approval in July and then find that that transfer's been revoked before the end of August because of excessive enrollments within the boundary area, and I just don't want anybody to be blindsided by that.
Do you mean?
Could we have that bolded in a different sized font?
Yes.
It's the, I mean, it's like two sentences later, but you think it should be, it needs to be sooner?
Well, it says, here it says, when, in the next paragraph, it says, "Once enrolled, a student shall not be required to reapply for re-admission," so that's sort of a sense of the next year. You see what I'm saying?
Okay, so you're saying, it sounds like it's only for the next year.
Right. And so I just felt like that needs to be clarified in some way, and, Mr. Sumter, you might want to, you know, you can play with that. And then the other thing that's missing from the original AR is between that paragraph on "once enrolled" and then "any complaints regarding the open enrollment process," that second paragraph, there is a place about terms and conditions of intra-district transfers that they can be revoked, essentially for excessive tardies and behavior issues, that I think should probably be carried over from the original AR. And then I had one question, and that's on page three of three. In the board policy, you change the transportation language so that it no longer includes a piece about "the superintendent or designee may authorize transportation contingent upon available space and funds." That's eliminated now from the BP, but now it's in the AR. And so I'm, that's a question.
Well, again, I think that was, as Eric would say, was a function of the use of the CSBA sample and the way it was worded there. And I believe it was just for the purpose of not being redundant in terms of those two things.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's not something that has to be eliminated.
Well, I guess it's a question for maybe for Mr. Smith or for Dr. Cash. Do you want to have that flexibility in the language of the AR?
No.
No. Okay, so then maybe we should request that that, that the BP and the AR match on that, and that it just end after program improvement school and eliminate that last sentence. Because my concern with that is it could, there could be some favorite, you know, like this parent asks and is getting something that another parent isn't, and it could create a perception of, you know, unfair treatment.
Can I just ask this question about that? Because I was kind of reading that differently as having that, that option, should it be warranted? If we remove that language, would we read it then to mean that the superintendent does not, that specifically superintendent does not have that authority? Or are we just?
I would not read it as that.
Okay. Because I want to, I want to make sure that if there were an extreme case where there seemed to be a legitimate need for it, that the superintendent did have the authority to do that.
I feel like the superintendent has a lot of leeway in the 2000s, so.
Okay. Okay, then I, as long as.
If it's not mentioned, if it's not says, if it doesn't say that he can't do it, then he has some flexibility.
Okay, so then I, as long as we retain that understanding of it, then I'm perfectly fine with eliminating it. Any additional? Ms. Deacon?
A quick question on number five on this page. For, do we, in practice, how quickly do we turn around the approval or denial of those?
Well, once the window of application closes, within a week or two, I'm meeting with the principals to go through the process of signing those applications, and the notifications will go out to the families after that's done, and including beyond that, holding the lottery for those where the need is.
Okay. All right. Because I was just wondering if, I don't know if we want to tie ourselves to a specified timeframe in number five or not. Maybe it's better to leave it flexible, but I do want to make sure that, it seems to me, in some years past, we've been slow in notifying parents sometimes, and they're waiting and trying to make decisions, and so it's nice to know that they're going to get a prompt response.
Well, in one respect, we're almost forced to do this process a little more quickly because of the Open Enrollment Act process that forces us to do it within 60 days.
Ms. Cordero, if I could just chime in on that. I mean, I think, though, that we have to recognize as a district and as a board that when you're waiting for inboundry kids to enroll, there's only so much you can do. Sometimes it's going to be that parents are going to be notified when school starts.
Yes.
I'm just trying to figure out why that looks different up there than mine does. And then maybe I'm, that's, are you looking at? Is, but, but.
That's not the AR.
The one I got didn't have the AR. It only had the BP.
Oh, yes. No. The AR is still in the.
The AR is still this. Okay. But, but for example, mine does not have that. I mean, maybe that's the only difference, but it doesn't have that heading of terms and conditions. The one I, the one I have in my binder.
Oh, it's.
Yes.
Does not have the heading of terms and conditions.
You were adding, wanting to add a section from our other AR. This is the BP.
No, that's the AR.
Oh, you got it? I'm sorry. Sorry.
And, and I think, Mr. Sumter, did you work on it and put the terms and conditions back in? Because that isn't in the AR originally.
I just, I just wanted to know, since I was seeing a difference, I just want to know if there are other differences between what you have up there and what I have in my binder.
The only correction I made on this AR was the, was the date change.
Okay.
In your binders, I'm not sure which.
So, now we, we are now getting a copy of the updated AR.
Okay.
We waited to hand it out until we were discussing.
Until you were sure you had confused us.
And then we ended up just probably confusing you more, Mr. Sumter.
Yes. Well, my only, the only thing I was going to comment on was in light of Ms. Parker's concern, if you simply took the first sentence under terms and conditions and moved it to the end of that paragraph instead of the beginning, would that address your concern?
So, that the paragraph starts with however, comma?
Well, it doesn't have to start with however, but it could start with, the student may be subject to displacement due to excessive enrollment, the last exception, blah, 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 blah. And then we don't talk about enrollment, reenrollment until the end.
That would be, that would be perfect, Mrs. Cordero, because it ties in and doesn't make it sound like it's part of readmission. That would be perfect.
Right. So, if we just take that, so, Mr. Sumter, I don't know if you're getting this, if we just take the first sentence of that paragraph and move it to the end of the paragraph, probably delete the however. I think that gets, that gets that issue without seeming confusing.
Absolutely.
Okay. Are we fine with this now? Okay. We can move on then to BP 5117. And do we have comments or concerns, questions about this one? Ms. Parker and then Ms. Deacon?
My, my only comment on this, I mean, because obviously, we're going to be looking at interdistrict transfers again in the near future. We may or may not be basic aid again this year. We may need to be addressing whether it's because of negative fiscal impacts or, I mean, this is going to be a bigger discussion. So, I was content just looking at essentially a date change here and changing the name to Unified School District. And so, with that, my only.
Thank you.
My only comment that I rose, brought already to Dr. Cash's attention is this change from the Board of Education to the Board of Trustees. And.
I have a legal opinion.
You may, I would, yes. Where's the code on that one, Dr. Cash?
Well, the origin, the first response was that, that we would be required. And when I pressed further, I was told that we, if the board wished to remain the Board of Education, there would be no need to change to Board of Trustees.
Thank you. I personally have been content being a Board of Education and see that as just a lot of semantic changes that may be unnecessary if we don't absolutely have to.
The, if we were a school district that was also chartered under the city, such as San Francisco or Oakland, then you would be a trustee.
Okay. So, what is the?
But you may be a member.
What is the preference of the board? Do we want to remain a Board of Education or Board of Trustees?
That's probably a topic for another day, isn't it?
Well, it's in this language.
Yeah, but your, your question is.
Well, I, okay. So, I guess my question, like, let me be more specific with my question. Do we want to change this language to Board of Trustees or do we want to leave the language as Board of Education?
I would leave it as Board of Education until we have that discussion and make a change.
Okay.
Ms. Lamone?
I would like the discussion to happen sooner rather than later because I feel like we've already changed some policy to trustees. And so, if, now we just need to be consistent.
Okay.
And I don't have a strong preference either way.
Okay.
Ms. Deacon?
I'm fine too. I actually got my wrist slapped by the county because I called myself a trustee on one of their forms and had to correct it. So, you know, it's, the terms are interchangeable quite often, but we should be consistent and I'm fine either way. And I, I did have a comment, another comment on 5117.
Sure.
The number four about the students and Harding University Partnership School, we had a little bit more clarifying language in the board policy, but I think on number four, we might want to match that up here where it would read, students wishing to attend Harding University Partnership School whose parents are employed, because it's only at that school that we make that distinction. So, the sentence would just begin, students wishing to attend Harding University Partnership School whose parents, guardians are employed, et cetera.
Thank you. I had, that had not occurred to me and I think it does make it much clearer.
Mr. Herron?
One general comment. I know that we had long discussions with Peabody School about their lottery process so it would correspond with our dates of what we do. Changing this date, does that change anything that we should tell Peabody about? And I can't remember exactly what, what they did, but they changed their whole process to make sure that it coincided with ours. So, if we changed our date, we should check with them to see how that reflects on their dates.
I can do that. Yeah, I have not communicated with them on that, but I can do that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. I also just want to chime in a little bit on the, on the education or trustee. And I also agree that we should have the discussion. I think we need to have the discussion because I think there are maybe some arguments to be made for trustee, but I agree with Mr. Herron that we should not change it until we have that discussion. So, can we just leave it as Board of Education for now and then we'll come back to it when we?
I made that note.
Okay. Thank you. So, any further discussion on this? Okay. What, and that, that was it actually. Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Sumter. We will move on to item G3. Discussion of the draft memorandum of understanding between the Santa Barbara Unified School District and the California Academy Foundation. And Mr., or Dr. Cash, you will be presenting this item to us?
Yes. You know, when you get to 18 drafts of something, one of two things happen. You either really get to hate someone or you get to love them. And I'm happy to report that I'm very happy with the work that was accomplished in getting to draft 18. It really highlighted for me how important and integral parents are in the process of educating children and what a great passion that the parents at Santa Barbara High School have for their multimedia academy. It was truly a pleasure to work with the foundation in getting to draft 18. And as you could well imagine, there was a lot of discussions. And I'm confident that draft 18 represents some really good thinking on behalf of the foundation and the district. And so, it's presented to you for questions and suggestions. And I, I can see that we have members of the foundation and Dan Williams, our incredible teacher in the academy, as well as our principal, John Beckio, here.
Okay. Thank you. Would we like to hear from our public members first before the board speaks to this? Okay. Ms. Deacon?
We have two speaker slips. I guess they're all in. Ron Pelici followed by Dan Williams.
So, just to make sure you know, this is not a movie, draft 18, or a fire station. But anyway, I must say that after working a year or so with your former illustrious superintendent, Brian, that I was really kind of taken back by the fact that he was leaving and, and I was hoping it would get finished, but it just didn't happen. And so, but I was pleasantly surprised that it didn't take long for Dr. Cash to get his boots on and his spurs and knock this thing out. And he did, he, he left some, you know, some blood first on the table, but actually, it was a really pleasant experience. And I'm very, looking forward to the future, whatever foundation activities we have with the superintendent, and I'm sure we will because we're ready to hopefully break ground on a, on a new project on your building that you graciously gave us to, to improve, which is not too far off in the distance. I did write to all of you regarding the other aspect of our program that I wanted to make sure that we were following up on, and I just wanted to say a couple of words on that. You know, a year and a half ago, the previous president, Dr. Salvucci, spoke to you about a project that, that my wife and he was quite instrumental in getting started. And we are working diligently and hoping that when we open our new doors next year, that that percentage will double. It's not easy to get that, as you were saying, Susan, to me, that it's not, a critical math has, mass has to happen. You have to get encouraged 20, 30 kids. You just can't bring in three or four and expect the rest to follow. But we're tracking it closely and hopefully, as Brian says, we're the flagship academy. And so, we set an example and we need to set that example and we're going to do our best. We've been here 15 years and there's been a lot of parents involved. And as Dr. Cash has known, he showed up for our meeting in September, there was 400 parents and very happy to see him. It was the first time a superintendent ever spoke to our, to our group and they were very pleased with that. And finally, let me say that we're very happy having Dan onboard for all these many years. He's done a great job and that's why the parents, for a great part, are motivated. And the parents really do participate greatly in our program. I think that's why it's, it's so successful. And they like Dan and they like the program. And I guess we don't speak as much about it and there's been some criticism that we don't get out as much in the public. Well, I guess if you're satisfied with your program and you're not running for office, you just, you just do your best and make it happen. But we are going to try to be more community oriented so that we can set an example for the other young, young programs that are going on. And last but not least, I must say that we are so excited about our new principal. He's really an incredibly young leader, amazing to be that young and to be that, that good, but he is. And my wife also said that at the parent teacher night, she was just amazed how happy the parents were. And finally, she said.
You wrap it up. I'm sorry, I lost track of the timing, but just about out of time.
She said, he must be cloned because he was in every classroom and all, the whole evening. So, he did a great job and we're really happy to have him. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dan Williams?
Well, thank you guys for having us here again. And I appreciate the support that you guys have provided for the multimedia academy over all the years and especially Dr. Cash and John Beckio. It's been actually a great few months working with them and it's been a really incredible change of feeling at the school site and also between the district and the academy. So, some of the things I want to just talk about really briefly is all of the great things going on in the program because we never really get a chance to tell you guys this stuff. So, one of the things I wanted to talk about is how these are the kind of the basic skills for the 21st century. We're finding from our students as they've come out and gone into graduation in colleges and gone back into the workforce, that they're finding that these are the skills that they need to be successful. And so, it's really cool to be a part of that. And I think that as much as we can infuse this throughout the schools, we should try to do that. The skills of multimedia presentation, being able to work in an internship and get real world experience and actually leave school with a practical skill where they can actually get a job is really important. So, I know that Dr. Cash is really into that model and it's really nice to have that support. So, some of the cool things that we continue to do after 15 years, 100% graduation rate of all of our students over the years, that's pretty incredible. 100% of our kids have gone on to higher education or the military. There's been a couple who've gone there. We are happy to grow the program because we're going to be able to serve so many more kids. So, we're going from 150 kids for the first 13 years to 260 kids, which is going to really alleviate a lot of those kids on our waiting list, which is just great. And that's why the building is really important, being able to expand that space to accommodate those kids. Right now, we were struggling at the beginning of this school year to find more seats just for the kids who've already come into our program. So, that's kind of a cool thing, but also a real frustrating thing because we literally have kids facing the wrong direction in classrooms and bringing in their own laptops and things. So, it's pretty fun to be in that growth stage and to be popular, I guess. Some of the cool things that we're starting this year or that we're continuing from the beginning of last year, the MAD Bridges Program is a program that we started at Santa Barbara Junior High to really encourage that diversity pathway, getting kids prepared for the program, giving them exposure to multimedia skills in the junior high. And then also, the kids, once they've come to Santa Barbara High School, are now part of a program called MAD Elements in the ninth grade, where we haven't let them just fall, you know, through the cracks. We're providing them with an after-school program.
30 seconds.
Okay. MAD Studios, providing real world experience on the campus. That's one of Dr. Cash's ideas that we're implementing this year. We're providing kids with a real world experience place where they learn from businesses, giving them projects, having clients, doing projects on campus for these nonprofits, local schools, local businesses. And then the MAD Leadership Program, which is incorporating our Arizona trip, leadership training, mentorship training, tying it all together for the kids. So, a lot of really cool things that could go on forever, but maybe you guys should just come and visit us and see how it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And I think we'll take you up on that invitation. Okay. Board members? Ms. Lamone?
I just have a question and I think it's going to be from Mr. Williams, sorry. I wanted to know a little bit more about the diversity improvement plan that's mentioned and the relationship to the MAD Bridges Program. So, it's in, yes, please, sorry. It's in place and I just wanted to hear a little bit more about that.
So, what it is, it's a program that's at, the MAD Bridges specifically is a program that we partnered with AHA, the Academy of Healing Arts. And what we did is we identified students in eighth grade at Santa Barbara Junior High who had an interest in media arts. And the idea that we had is that it's tough to get kids to be a part of a three-year program if they have no idea what that skill set is. So, if you're trying to sell the idea of a multimedia academy to a kid who doesn't even have a computer at home or has never taken a class in animation or web design or film or anything like that, they're not going to commit. So, what we've tried to do is find a way to get a cohort of students together, work with them on a weekly basis, give them some of these basic multimedia skills, but also provide some of the soft skills of confidence and cohesion and partnership, friendship, that they could kind of be a cohort, kind of like what Ron was talking about. So, they could come into the program as a group and feel secure and feel like they have a place there and that they're not behind the A-ball because now they have this year worth of training. We did that last year. Now, we've realized that having them come to the high school and be in ninth grade and not have them together as a group is a real dangerous thing because you could lose them. That's why we came up with the MAD Elements Program. That is a program we're starting. We have a new assistant director this year and he's teaching a class once a week where the kids come to the MAD Academy either before school or after school. And they're going to take a couple of weeks to learn about web design and then animation and then film production and then all the different elements of MAD Academy. And again, through that process, we're going to work with those students, help them fill out the application, help them to learn some interview skills for the MAD interview process so that they feel that they're prepared. So, it's making sure that we're not just talking about increasing diversity, but providing the skill sets that they need to have that diversity come into our program.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Parker? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lamone?
I just, I did have something else and I was hoping actually from the staff to get copies of the exhibits because I know they didn't come out on mine that were attached to the contract, so.
Do we have copies of the exhibits?
If not, now they could be emailed. That's perfectly fine. Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
I was going to laugh, Mr. Williams, because the, given the requirements of the Partnership Academy, I, I would think that you would be looking for a lot of students that actually did really poorly on an interview and, you know, obviously have, that, that come in not having the skills since you need to make up, you know, 50% of your population needs to have essentially, what is it, a 2.2 or below or one of the other indications of an at-risk student. student, and there are several of them there. I guess, I thought that the, that this is a big step forward. This is really much, much better than anything I've seen in the past, and thank you so much for the work that you've done on this. I guess my only comment, I appreciate the piece on no MAD students shall be charged fees of any type or for any reason as a condition of enrolling. And honestly, I don't feel like you've ever done that, but I know that it has, you've played with where and how to make a request to parents, because obviously what you provide does cost more than what the partnership funding from the state of California can help with. It's hard, not for MAD, but I have had friends go through some of the other academy processes where now it doesn't say anywhere on an application that there's going to be even a request to parents to make a donation. And then they got the request, not MAD, again, different academy, but were shocked. And I don't know if, maybe Mr. Pulice, you could speak to how parents are responding, and do you have it, is it just something that you bring up at the parent meeting at this point, or how does it happen now?
What we do, we're very careful about that, because we make it very clear in the interview process as well, that it's, this is not a free program. It costs us money to put this on. We have donors that are not part of the parent group. We have a foundation that's aiding us, as well as the academy at Dos Pueblos, the Moser Foundation. We have some other outside donors as well that are helping us, but by and large, the sum of money that helps put this thing together is the parents. And, but there are parents that can afford it, and we basically say, "If you can afford it, we really would encourage you to help us." But we understand that a lot of you can, and it's totally fine. It's a fine line, because we want to encourage people that can afford to help the program, help it, but we don't want to, you know, make people feel like they're getting a handout either. So, but it's been working, and that's about all I can say, unless you have a question I could answer more clearly than that. It's kind of vague, but that's how we handle it. We bring it up, we have a goal every year. This year's goal is nearly $300,000. And we get, you know, a third of that from the state. And so, and from, and so that's, you guys help out with reducing, you know, we spend our money with, of yours, your money, on our reduction of our enrollment, so we have a smaller classroom. So, we, and then, of course, we have some of Dan's salary that goes that way. Anyway, we do our best, and so, we raise about two-thirds of our money through our parents.
Well, interestingly, from what I've seen at our, at our schools with high Title I populations, particularly in the elementary district, I would say, the schools that have the lowest socioeconomic students actually bring in so much more money from foundations that want to support at-risk students than parents. I think parents would be shocked at our high-income schools. They think that they raise a lot of money, and they do, but it's nowhere near what's coming in to support our at-risk students. So, you may be very pleasantly surprised as your diversity level goes up at the number of foundations that are then willing to step forward and help you in ways that they wouldn't have in the past.
Well, in fact, the Moser Foundation, that was their prerequisite, that that's where the money goes. So, that's where we're putting it. So, it helps to have friends in the community, and the more we have, the more it prospers. Now, we are very prosperous. We do have retained cash from years of stashing, in a way, and preparing for this new building in case we can't get somebody to put their name on the building like they were fortunate to have in Dos Pueblos, but we think we will eventually. But anyway, thanks for the question.
Any other question? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Deacon?
I had more of a comment than a question, and I do appreciate your efforts to increase diversity. I know you have been working hard at that, and I know that throughout the district, we have resources that we can also help you with. And I think that if we can all put our heads together and look to the community, there may be other avenues as of yet unexplored. And I don't want to steal from other really strong programs, but I would think there may be some avid students that actually would be great candidates for the MAD Academy. And there's an organization, I was trying to remember the name the other day, CineMedia, here in town, which is exactly, kind of targets those students. I think they're older for the most part, but they probably have siblings and younger friends. So, I think we all can work together to help with this diversity piece and not place the burden solely on the teaching staff at the school, because I know you have a lot of things to do, and it's a goal we all share. So, I just wanted to say that, and thank you. I'm really pleased, as you are, I'm sure, to have gotten this far.
Ms. Herron?
Other than the exhibits, is there a reason for this to come back to us again, or could we approve it tonight?
I guess that's a question for the entire board, whether we would want, need to have this come back to us again. I'm sorry.
Well, that was a note I had written on mine as well. Unless there's significant changes in the text, I don't know if we need to.
I just had a couple of questions before, if we are going to move ahead with a motion. But I suppose if the board is prepared to vote on this, we don't need to have it come back.
I think I would want input from Dr. Cash on whether he feels it's, number 18 is-
I think 18 is a great number, quite frankly. It's a symbolic number as well in a whole host of ways, but I-
Okay, okay. My question was, and I hope, I hope this doesn't sound like an impertinent question, how diverse is your foundation board?
Well, we have 12, 12 members on our board. We're split seven, five men and women, and there are right now two women on the board that are diverse at the present time.
Okay, that can help you do outreach into the communities that you're trying to reach?
Well, um-
Let me be more specific. Are they Latinas?
Yes.
Okay. So, and are they Spanish-speaking?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, and that's the target audience that you're-
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, so, is that working for you? Is that helping you?
Uh, I haven't realized that particularly. You know, I don't, they're new members, and one's taken a leave for six months, but she's a teacher at MUS, and she's helpful. But, you know, that's not how we find it. I mean, it's really in the trenches at the school, and the AHA program has been, you know, really helpful, because that's their, that's their whole audience. And they work hard at it, and they've been helping us. But it takes, it's really, it's not something that's come easily. I thought it would become much simpler, and we're going to have to do more in the next three months to make this thing happen that I promised myself that I would try to make happen. And so, I've not seen the numbers yet. We had, you know, 37 kids at the junior high, and we spent a bunch of money, but then we had this new program at the high school called the Seminar Class, and it ate up all the kids because it was mandatory, so they had less electives. Some of those kids took Spanish and seminar instead of pre-MAD, and so, it's been difficult. It's not a simple answer, this thing, but we're not going to give up. And I'm going to report back next September, or at least maybe the next president over there in the end, there, Mr. Rollins, will report back. Woody, it should be your job next year.
Good. He liked the way he commits you to something, yeah. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate your response. Ms. Herron, did you-
Yes, I would move the approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Santa Barbara Unified School District and the California Academy Foundation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your patience. Okay, that brings us to item G4. A discussion of the Community Summit's report from Santa Barbara Campaign for Youth and Families. And Dr. Cash, I think you are going to present this to us?
Yes, I'm glad it's a little before 8:00 as I present this. And this was an incredible opportunity for all, all five board members and a lot of our district staff to listen carefully to the voices in our community regarding the experiences students in our schools have had in relationship to their school experience and also their experience within the city, and particularly with law enforcement. I found the report compelling in a whole host of ways. It was both affirming as to kind of my own feeling and anecdotal data, as well as hard data that I've reviewed regarding students. But I think from my perspective, I found it probably hit me more in the heart than it did in the head, listening to people speak about their own experiences. And in that sense, it was even more compelling for me as far as acting. You've heard me all say that our senior staff is going to be working hard at providing the board with an opportunity to look carefully at restorative justice as a discipline model in our schools. And we have begun a conversation about that today. We had a significant conversation about what that might look like, and that conversation will continue. Once we have wrapped our heads around how we think it might best look in our schools functionally, we have decided that we will ask an external agency to come in and provide some kind of boots-on-the-ground training for, in particular, our administrators. And we know that we have work to do, and not just in the area of discipline, but also as far as classroom engagement is for all of our students. And that would be ongoing, and that would not be set aside as we really look closely at our discipline and how it impacts students. Interestingly, the examples of kind of the confusion about how best to respond to incidents that occur on campus continue. And I was at Dos Pueblos last week, and there was an incident occurring there, and it was how, you know, what's the best way to respond to this? And, you know, all the administrators have heard me now, and those that have known me before I left know how I would approach discipline. So, it's a paradigm shift for us if we are to move into a restorative disciplinary on, and how we work with students and families. And so, there is some confusion occurring right now, and so, confusion isn't always bad. Sometimes confusion is good because we learn to ask some good questions that lead to some clarity. But I found that this report, which has been shared with all the administrators in our school district, was a good jumping-off point for us to begin that discussion on how it impacts schools. And it's on the agenda tonight for me to listen carefully to your discussion regarding the report. So, thank you.
Okay, board members? Ms. Herron?
I had one immediate response during that session, and again, when I reread it now, it's a very broad indictment of school personnel in general, which I don't really buy into. It's a small sampling of both parents and students, but if you read it, you think that we've got a staff that is just ignorant of reality, and I just don't think that's true. So, there may be cases, there may be instances of reaction, but I don't think it's as black and white as this report shows. But I think we need to work on it, but I, this would be very discouraging if I didn't know better.
Well, I just would like to kind of respond to that comment, and that is, that I think two things. One is, the report is based on the responses that students gave and the comments that students and parents and community members made. And I think it's very important to understand that this, whether we agree with it or not, that is their perception. And so, what I think would be valuable to do is to try to understand why the students are having these perceptions. If we think that the perception is inaccurate, what is it about the way that things are being handled on our campuses that are causing the students to perhaps, perhaps misperceive the intentions or attitudes of the people with whom they're interacting? But having said that, I also think it's extremely important for us not to discount our students' realities. If they say, "This is what's happening to me," I think we owe them the respect of acknowledging that they are the experts on their own realities. And so, because having, having worked with the district for a very long time on issues around racism before I was on the board, it was extremely frustrating to present information to members of the district administration only to have them say that doesn't happen. That's not happening, we don't do that, our teachers don't do that, our administrators don't do that, our counselors don't do that, when in fact, students were repeatedly saying that this happened to them. And so, if we get into that mold of, "Our teachers don't do this, but the students are saying this is happening to us," I think we just get locked into kind of a, an area where we're not moving forward in any way, because the students feel like we're disrespecting their voices, and we feel like they're being inaccurate, and nobody's moving forward. So, I'd rather just look at what is actually happening, what's causing the perceptions. And I think this report gives us a lot of information to work with. And I have to say, there was a couple of comments throughout the report, there's, for those people who haven't seen the report, throughout the report, there's little snips of statements that were written by students. And I thought, one of them was really profound, where it says, "People will find respect however they can get it." So, if they are feeling disrespected in the classroom, whether appropriately so or not, unfortunately, they find, they will find the respect outside of the classroom, and in some cases, among groups or peers that are not positive influences on them. So, I just think we have to get back to that idea of giving, if we can make them feel respected in the classroom and reflected, respected on campus, I would much rather they be getting their respect there than in some of the other places that might be much more harmful. So, but anyways, I agree with Dr. Cash, the report has a great deal of important information. There was actually one other comment I wanted to make, and that is, as we, as we do move forward with the restorative justice model, which I'm thrilled that we are going towards, it is important, I think, for us to keep in mind that even the restorative justice model has to be culturally centered and culturally sensitive, because Jerry Theo, who was our keynote speaker that day, I was talking to him about our move towards restorative justice, pointed out that there, there's sort of a generic approach to restorative justice, and then there's very culturally specific approaches to restorative justice. And so, I think we really need to keep that in mind and make sure we are looking at those culturally relevant forms. So, and I think you're probably doing that, but I just want to make sure that we are keeping that in mind. Okay, any other comments from the board? Ms. Parker?
Thank you. I think, I appreciate, I appreciate Dr. Cash's comment about how it resonated more with his heart than with his head. And I think that is one thing that you do have to keep in mind with this, that these, I really saw these as individual student voices, and they did include numbers like 41 and the majority, and there were those references, but this was, this was not any sort of representative sampling. But the individual voices are very important. And it's also important, though, as you're reading it, to keep in mind who's not there. Like, for example, one of the question marks that I had about it was in the parent summary, where it's like, "Create more parenting circles modeled after community action commissions parenting groups." But Padres Unidos and the Parent Project representatives weren't there, and it didn't sound like any of these parents had been through that. So, I don't, I can't tell. I mean, we have hundreds of parents go through the Parent Project, and it sounds very similar to what they're talking about with the CAC's parenting groups. And so, I just, I felt like it's, there are those types of gaps- And so I just, I felt like it's, there are those types of gaps in it. And I also was feeling for administrators that I know spend hundreds of hours helping out with students and are already in there, essentially doing their own model of restorative justice, and spend so much time, but maybe not with these students. So we need to hear these voices as well. So I just think it's important that we stay balanced on it, that this is great information, and that we use it, and we use it wisely, and not think of this as some sort of like statistical summary of what's going on in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, but rather as this is something that does happen, and that this is what, I really found the youth's voice the most compelling in this. And Mrs. Cordero, you're absolutely right. If this is how it's perceived by any individual, even if it's just one student, then that needs to be addressed.
Deacon?
Well, I think everyone has pretty much addressed the really key, important points that came out of this, and I really enjoyed attending the summit myself, because hearing the students themselves speak was very compelling. I would like to see us also focus on providing some female counterparts to Mr. Huerta, because I know that he's, he's had a lot of success, and I feel that there's a population of young women that we haven't addressed as aggressively and as well as, as maybe we could. And so when we do approach our full-body discussion about restorative justice, I'd like to have us talk about that. And I know there are good female role models on our campuses, but maybe we can work even harder to connect them with some of the young women that would benefit from that relationship.
And I think as Ms. Parker and I can attest, Mr. Huerta has repeatedly stressed that he feels we need a female counterpart to his position.
Ms. Lamone?
So, I appreciate all the comments that have been made. You know, I read this, and I would love to tell you that this is not part of the reality that I grew up in, but it is. And so, to me, a sample size of 41 is a small sample size, considering we're a school district of 15,000. However, 10, 20, 15, 30 years of hearing these issues speaks much louder than this particular report. So I appreciate the comments about the sample size, but I think that this is historical. We're not hearing anything we haven't been hearing for the last 40 years. And I want to make sure that that piece is not ignored whatsoever. I also had the chance to read the National Education Policy Center's report that just came out about discipline policies, successful schools, and racial justice. And I actually feel that that report is really speaking to, this is a national problem. So what this is doing is only contextualizing it. And I feel that the national report is saying, "This is true. Our underrepresented students are disproportionately being targeted with some of our discipline policies, and we have to rethink and reshape what we're doing." So, you know, that report just came out this month, and I think that it was all interesting, because this all happened in one month. But I think it's important to understand that at the national level, there are discussions about our discipline approach. And so I think that while this is a small sample size, it does contextualize it and makes it specific to our district. Do I think it's a blanket approach? Absolutely not. I mean, we all know educators in our community that are working every day who weren't sampled in this, but this is real. And it's personally very real to me. This is, I mean, we, Dr. Cash was at a forum, and I was there in attendance on Thursday night, where we heard very similar issues raised. So, I mean, if it's anecdotal, in some of our own kind of discipline responses here at the district when thinking of suspensions and expulsions, we're reading this. And so I think that I would like us to see, really, as we move forward, any issues related to discipline that we think broadly, because my fear is that we take pieces of what discipline might be, or how we approach discipline, and we only address that piece, and it doesn't always fit in with the bigger picture. I get excited hearing restorative justice, but then I also worry, because restorative justice has different meanings to different folks. It's implemented differently across school districts, for those that even consider it. So that's another piece that I want to be very careful of, anything that comes forward to us, that it's part of a bigger conversation about discipline, and that we don't just see it as a single action, and that it doesn't have some correlation to our bigger philosophy, whatever philosophy we all share. And then the other piece that this brought up is, you know, the more I read this, I thought that there's institutions and nonprofits in our community who do some of the work. And I know that some work that would actually be beneficial, because I don't know that the school district can do everything we want to do. I think we all have like, "Oh, gosh, if we had all the human power and financial power, we would, wow, we would be running amazing show here." But I don't think we can. So, I mean, one of the questions that was raised is, I know, for example, New Beginnings Counseling Center used to provide counseling programs for just females and males at San Marcos and Santa Barbara. And I thought to myself, geez, are they still doing that? And is there a way that we can be more specific in what we're looking for for the community? I find that sometimes the community comes and says, "We have this to offer," and we try to find a place. But I wonder if we can also be strategic about saying and identifying things that we need or resources we need in the community, because some of this, I think, would be really hard for a school district to take on completely. So I appreciate the work that Dr. Rios and his research team did, and I think it's congruent with what other researchers are saying in the country about our discipline policy.
Each of you have been given a copy of the study Ms. Lamone referenced, so it's in your box. I handed them out today to the principals, along with a recent article in EdWeek.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to just say something really quick in response to what Ms. Lamone said, that I would invite my fellow board members to consider the fact that Ms. Lamone and I, both sitting up here, are telling you that despite the more than 20 years difference in our age, the report actually speaks very accurately to our realities in this school district. So, Mr. Herron?
I understand totally, but if you read on page 10 and 11, the section on violence at school, and if you believe that is true, then drastic action has to be taken, because I don't believe there is physical abuse, verbal abuse, violent abuse, yelled at, frustrations, skipping school for fear of violent reaction from teachers and staff. I mean, if you read page 10 and 11, if that's actually the truth, as you perceive it or you know it, then drastic action has to be taken. I just don't believe, and I will stand up for our teachers and our staff, that they are not doing this to the degree that this implies. I'm not saying it doesn't exist. I'm just saying, I just don't believe this is representative of our staffs and the other 14,000 students in our school system. It's going way to one side. And it's being done by a group of students, a very select group of students. I agree with everything you're all saying, but I'm not going to stand by and let our staff be dissected and put this on their backs to the degree that it states in this document.
I think we all feel that we have a very good staff, and we don't want to malign them. We also, I also believe that we have a responsibility to support our students. Thank you. Ms. Parker?
And I'll just chime in, where in some ways, it, again, I would say, it doesn't matter the sample size, but it does matter the sample size. I think you're essentially saying the same thing, Ms. Lamone and Mr. Herron. My suspicion is that everybody knew somebody that had a bad experience, and everybody had plenty of friends that had good experiences. And without having a real sample size, we can't go in that direction in terms of figuring out how real is it. The fact is, is that it happens, and so as long as it happens at all, it needs to be addressed. Period.
I'm hesitating to even say anything, because I don't want to extend this discussion. But this past weekend, I was in San Francisco, giving a presentation on how people of color have their voices marginalized. So I kind of feel like I have to speak up on this. And I think that, I'm feeling a little bit disappointed that we're focusing more on the sample size than we are on the fact that we're telling you that it's been going on in our experience for over 20 years. So even if we're talking about a small group of students per year, that's still an extremely large amount of students. But on top of that, we've just heard the same thing from a fairly significant number of people at a public meeting. We've been hearing it, but basically the same thing, for at least 30 years at every public meeting we attend that is primarily Latino parents. If you go to any Latino parent meeting and ask them this question, you will hear essentially what is in this report. Now, we can choose to disbelieve that many people, or say we think they're maligning our staff, but I think it's extremely unfair to the Latino community to take that position, because this is not an isolated report. We have to put it in the context of what we've heard for decades. And those of us who have worked in the Latino community have certainly heard from far more than 41 people over 30 years. So I'm a little distressed that we aren't taking that as solid information. And I, I mean, I think we have lots of very, very wonderful staff, but that doesn't discount the fact that I think these things happen to our students. And they have been happening, they continue to happen. There are people in, on our own staff who would tell you they happen if they were, if they felt safe enough doing that. So I'm concerned that I think we need to hear it, and we need to believe it. So with that, if anybody else wants the final word, they can have it.
Can I have the final word?
You may have the final word, Dr. Cash.
Well, this is obviously a very emotional issue, and that was evidenced today in our principals' meeting, which it went 50 minutes beyond the end of the meeting on the conversation that you're having right now. And it was very emotional, it was very appropriate, and it was, I think, potentially a turning point in some thinking, which was very exciting to me. And it, I, in my understanding, this will be the first time our district is going to take an in-depth look at this issue. In the 20-some years, I know it's been in and out and in again, in our district's history, that this is the first time that I can recall, as an administrator, we've ever had this kind of high-level conversation about this with what appears to be, and no one's, I haven't polled you, but what appears to be some real interest in looking deeply at it. And I'm excited about that, because from my perspective, whatever comes out at the end is going to be good for kids, because we will have, I believe, a high-level conversation about this issue. And I think that's whatever, ultimately, kids will win. So it's emotional, but I'm excited about the opportunity, so.
Good. Well, good things are usually hard to come by, so that, so it's good that it's tough. Okay. So we will go back for Consent Agenda Item Number E23. Mr. Herron, I think you pulled this item.
Yes. My question is, is just one of wording. In the document from Mr. Hetjank, under the issue portion, it says, "The scheduled start date of this project is February 20th, 2012, to allow sufficient time for the validation action requested by a board member." You know, based on my protocol, as a board member, doesn't have the authority to mandate something to be happening. I never thought that I did. I thought that by no objection, the times I've raised this issue, that there must have been general agreement. But if there isn't, I'm perfectly happy for that decision to be debated and deleted, if that's the wishes of the board. I have my own personal feelings on validation, but I don't believe that one board member, you know, has the power to make this request and have it happen, if in fact, the rest of the board members don't want it to happen.
Ms. Deacon?
I would like to have it happen. I mean, we've been talking about this ever since we started LEAST-Least Back, and I think we need to go through the process. So you don't stand alone, Mr. Herron?
It said one board member, and I just don't know that, you know, I just felt not right about that.
And I think that your assumption is sort of, is accurate. I mean, I think it's certainly in our practice, that if one board member makes a request and we don't object to it, that it goes forward, that if we didn't agree with you, we would have said, "No, we don't think that needs to be done." So I think probably we should, it would be helpful to change the language and maybe said that it was requested by the board. Because I think it is safe, I think it's a safe assumption, that if it's made in an open session of the board meeting and none of us object, that it really is the agreement of the board.
Consensus of the board.
Yeah. So perhaps that, we can just change that statement to just say the board, so that it doesn't appear as if one person was making a decision.
With that addendum to the verbiage, I'll move to approve.
Okay. Second. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. So that brings us to coming events. Do we have, I'm sorry, did I skip something? We pulled, we pulled Item E12.
Oh, pull it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So coming events, are there any coming events that we need to highlight, other than the upcoming performances that we mentioned in the superintendent report? Nope, nope. Okay. Future agenda items?
I got an email from a lady today, and maybe the rest of you did too, regarding cell phone or wireless.
Oh, yes.
And I know we approved E22, which is the entity to look at our system and design a system of wireless. But I think, I don't know if we want to bring that on the agenda sometime or not, I'll leave it up to Dr. Cash, but I want to acknowledge the letter I got, and...
Did members of the administrative staff receive a copy of that letter?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
And I invited her to come in to meet with me.
Yeah.
And I'm going to be preparing a board brief for you about the issues that were raised in her letter to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anything else? Then we have reached the bewitching hour. We are adjourned.
On meal sales, I, you know, I read through all the meal sales and places the money goes and all that. How does catering fit in with our board policies?
Well, à la carte sales, other than the fact that we have to use those dollars in the cafeteria fund, we don't have the same kind of regulations, you know. I guess, what are you asking?
Well, I guess, is catering considered à la carte?
Yes.
Is anything that's... Is anything that's after school hours?
Catering is à la carte.
À la carte?
That's correct.
Money goes into the cafeteria fund, but it doesn't fit into any of these things, so we don't need to worry about that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, mostly what you're looking at is regulations from the national school and breakfast and lunch program and how it actually folds into code and policy.
Okay, AR 3551? Oh, I'm sorry, BP 3551?
On page 39, just a minor question. It says that the board is supposed to approve all meal prices based on cost of providing food services and consistent. Do we ever approve meal prices? We do?
You approve meal increases and we don't do it on an annual basis, but if there's an increase in meals, we bring it here and you approve it. And that has happened in the last four years.
Yes.
Well, this just says, okay, meal prices, okay. Thank you.
Okay, AR 3551? Nope, okay. BP 3553? Nope, okay. AR 3553? Hey, we got through these. Okay, so we will come back to those. Do we want to act on any of these tonight? Mr. Herron?
I would like to waive the second reading and approve BP 3551, AR 3551, BP 3553, AR 3553.
And AR?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on those?
For clarification, can you tell me which ones are left, just so I make sure I have them?
Everything other than food services.
Okay.
Well, we were not, you didn't take 3550 and BP 3550 and AR 3550, so it would include those. Those are left.
Okay.
Just 51 and 53.
Yeah.
Both BP and AR are up for approval.
Yeah, so we're only voting on those.
But Mr. Herron, may I ask, did you mean to include BP 3550 and 35?
I meant to approve everything that was food service related.
Oh.
So would you amend your motion to that?
I amended my motion to that, yes, that was my intent.
And I will second the amended motion.
Okay. Okay, and then we'll clarify again for Mr. Smith what's not included here. Okay, so any further discussion on these? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. So, Mr. Smith, the ones we did not include were BP 3100, BP 3280, and BP 3290. Those are the three that are left to review. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. We completed the consent agenda earlier, so that brings us to coming events. Are there any coming events that board members would like to identify? Ms. Deacon already identified one for us, very helpful. Any from Dr. Cash?
Well, this Saturday is the opening of the Engineering Academy's new building at Dos Pedros.
Yes, yes.
And I'm hopeful some of you, if not all of you, will be there.
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, then, future agenda items. I know we have a lot of future agenda items already. Are there any more that we are adding on? Ms. Lamone?
Perhaps a future, future, not immediate, but is, we talked a little bit maybe about discipline policy related to clarifying some, I'm trying to get the wording right, clarifying some aspects regarding two strikes. Well, that too, but I was actually thinking more, more recent on my mind, some language clarifying how we're going to deal with student misconduct around academic integrity. And I don't think that that's the actually official wording of the policy, but...
It is the academic.
Integrity.
Well, it's part of the 5144 exhibit. Item 28.
There you go.
So you would like that placed on as a discussion item?
Okay.
At some point, with all the emphasis on teacher evaluation, I know we have a pilot test program going on now with teacher evaluation that I don't think we've had a formal presentation on. So I would like to have more information on that in light of, it's a very important topic right at the moment.
I'm not with the, I'm not quite confident, and I know Mr. Sumter is not here and he's quite a capable person, that we're going to be able to get all of the issues resolved regarding the canine detection in two weeks. The most, the biggest issue is communicating with what appears to be all of our stakeholders. I don't know that that could be accomplished in the next, not eight days or so. So I don't believe that absent some superhuman effort that that would be back before you at the next board meeting unless you would like it there just to talk about again.
No, I think... And I'll clarify my comments. I think it's going to be hard to reach everybody. I just want, for me, my comment was really around making an effort. So even on e-news, sending an email, so I'm not opposed to seeing it in two weeks, but I want, I think it's going to be really hard to get everybody.
Yeah.
I felt, yeah, I felt the same way, is that just an effort to let more people know than what they currently know.
But I do think, I would prefer to have it come back to us when there has been some meaningful interaction with the community, rather than trying to rush it into two weeks if that's not really workable.
Thank you.
Is that, okay.
I was going to be rude and look at my calendar. I know the D-LAC meeting is coming up. I just am uncertain if it's in the next two weeks. And I'm going to all three high schools' PTA meetings this month, and I don't think it's before the next board meeting.
Okay.
So, right, and I certainly will, I'll make sure parents know that that will be something I'll talk about and we'll talk to them, get their feedback on it, from all three E-LACs, the D-LAC and all three PTA meetings.
Okay, then I guess that brings us to adjournment.
Sorry, it wasn't before 8:30.
But it's more factual, just for information, we did approve three contracts today with three different educational entities for master teachers. And in reading them, you know, one was for four years, one was for five years, some were for $100, $200, $350. One was forever, one goes on until somebody says no. It just, I guess I would like to know, how many of these contracts do we have? Is there a norm as to what they should be paid? Has that amount that we, they pay changed over the years? Should we have some kind of policy that says if we sign one of these contracts, they will be for X number of years and it'll be for compensation of X and will be reviewed annually? You know, the contract now says one of them is for, I think, $200 for the next five years or four years. I mean, is that good basic policy? Are we looking at these things in the context of uniformity, norms? I have no idea, but it did, it is something that I'd like to know more about.
Okay, so I would like to maybe suggest or request from staff that we get a report along the lines that we used to get in the board brief, updating us on what types of contracts we have and what the, sort of, if, the range of agreements that we have, if there is no norm, or if there is a norm, what the norm is.
And who decides where the...
And then, and so a lot of this information that Mr. Herron has requested, and then once the board has a chance to see that report, we can determine whether we want to request that it be placed on an agenda for us to have fuller discussion regarding the need for a policy, et cetera, if there is one. Okay, so that, is that clear enough direction? Okay, thanks. Okay, anything else? All right, then, I guess that brings us to adjournment.